Good afternoon, we will be calling the board meeting to order in a moment as SPS TV will begin broadcasting. This is President Hershey, I am now calling the board a special meeting to order at 3:15 PM. We would like to acknowledge that we are on the ancestral lands and traditional territories of the Puget Sound Coast Salish people. We have with us directors of the Seattle School Board, Vice President Hampson, Director Harris, Director Rivera Smith, Director Saar Ju should be joining us shortly, Director Song Maritz, Director Rankin, and this is President Hershey. The superintendent is also present with us as well as staff. We are also being joined by special guests here to celebrate a very momentous day and a culmination of much work. This evening, we will be swearing in the first school board student members that will be joining the Seattle School Board. This, yeah, you can clap for that, this is a big deal. This moment is the culmination of years of work by the Washington NAACP Youth Council in coordination with SPS and many students across our system. We are joined also tonight by Rita Green representing the NAACP. We have with us Rena Matisia Walker Burr and Sabrina Burr, two folks who have not only been a part of advocacy in this area, but were critical, and I mean critical, in the design, development, and the overall advocacy that brought us to this moment that we are celebrating tonight. Before I begin, I wanted to give Rena the opportunity to say a few words. Rena, would you like to say a few words before we move on with our program? It would be an absolute honor. Yes, clapping is, this is a momentous celebration.
Um, I just want to say thank you so much for just making this policy possible, and thank you to the students so much for just like wanting to dedicate your time and wanting to make a change in your community and wanting to take that first step. I am so proud of you guys, and I hope with the opportunity that you're given, you're open to really open doors for other students as well, so that they can see themselves represented in like students who actually go to schools and have a voice in Seattle Public Schools. And I'm just really excited, and I hope that this is the first step to really changing the way that we look at education and the way that we look at systems, and the way that children and students have a voice at the table, so that they're able to actually advocate for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita, is that you back there? I can't, hey, would you like to say a few words before we move on? That would be great, it's good to see you.
Thank you. Hi, thank you, I just want to say this was one of our very first demands, it was demand number three, which we proposed in 2017. So to let you know that nothing is easy, it's been five long years for this to actually get from concept to implementation, and we're so happy. And for the students that are on the board, just know that this is a huge responsibility for you to be the voice for all youth in Seattle Public Schools, because there are many youths whose voices wasn't heard, which is why we implemented this, and it's a great joy, and I hope you guys do well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Rena and Ms. Green, your work and the work of the youth have made true and lasting change in Seattle Public Schools, and we will be better for it as we continue on with such an amazing program. I also want to recognize the work of former school board director Zachary Pollan, who shepherded this important policy and worked directly alongside youth and myself to ensure that its implementation was one that would be long-lasting and true. We will now begin the Oaths of Office. If the student members could please join me up front. And we're gonna try to keep these as far apart as possible. Okay. Alright, so we will begin with Nasira Hassan. Nasira, please step forward and repeat after me. I, Nasira, do solemnly swear-
I, Nasira, do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States-
-that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States-
-and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington-
-and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington-
-and will to the best of my judgment-
-and will to the best of my judgment-
-skill and ability-
-skill and ability-
-truly and faithfully-
-truly and faithfully-
-diligently and impartially-
-diligently and impartially-
-perform the duties-
-perform the duties-
-of student member-
-of student member-
-of the Seattle Public School Board of Directors-
-of the Seattle Public Schools Board of Directors-
-as such duties are prescribed by law and policy-
-as such duties are prescribed by law and policy-
Congratulations!
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have Luna Crone Baron. Please step forward. I, your name-
I, Luna Lilith Crone Baron-
-do solemnly swear-
-do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution-
-that I will support the Constitution-
-and the laws-
-and the laws-
-of the United States-
-of the United States-
-and the Constitution and laws-
-and the Constitution and laws-
-of the State of Washington-
-of the State of Washington-
-I will to the best of my judgment-
-I will to the best of my judgment-
-skill and ability-
-skill and ability-
-truly and faithfully-
-truly and faithfully-
-diligently and impartially-
-diligently and impartially-
-perform the duties-
-perform the duties-
-of the student member of the Seattle Public School Board of Directors-
-of the student member of the Seattle Public School Board of Directors-
-as such duties are prescribed by law and policy-
-as such duties are prescribed by law and policy-
Congratulations, fantastic. Jenna. And Jenna, can you pronounce your last name for me? I want to make sure I get it right.
Yuan.
Yuan, fantastic. Alright, I, your name, do solemnly swear-
-I, Jenna Yuan, do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States-
-that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States-
-and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington-
-and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington-
-and will to the best of my judgment-
-and will to the best of my judgment-
-skill and ability-
-skill and ability-
-truly and faithfully-
-truly and faithfully-
-diligently and impartially-
-diligently and impartially-
-perform the duties-
-perform the duties-
-of student member of the Seattle Public School Board of Directors-
-of student member of the Seattle Public Schools Board of Directors-
-as such duties are prescribed by law and policy-
-as such duties are prescribed by law and policy-
Congratulations Jenna. Let's give another round of applause for our new board members. We will now pause for a few minutes for pictures, and then we have refreshments and things, so just give us a few moments. And then we have refreshments and things, so just give us a few moments.